Started. This is a pretty informal hearing. I just wanted to kind of let the public and the board know where we're at. After figuring, LJ Hart has been walking beside us on this after figuring with our assessed valuation, the tax rate that I'm proposing will be, oh, sorry. The tax rate that we'll be proposing this year is the same as last year with that 50 cent increase that the community supported with the vote that you all had in April. So it would, it goes from $4.05 basically, and when we do tax rate hearings, you always have to go out the four decimals. And if you add that 50 cent tax levy on that you all, your community supported, your teachers for fund two with for salaries, it puts it at $4.55. It's pretty easy with the hearing this year. Any questions? All right. Well, then I guess we'll hang out until six o'clock and we'll start the meeting at six o'clock then. Yeah, sure. I haven't been here but this year, so I can't answer that question, but.
I believe that's right.
Okay.
It wasn't this early. It was after the first meeting in August, wasn't it? I don't remember when it.
Yes, it's just letting you know what we're proposing later in the board meeting, what we're going to propose. And it's the same tax rate they had last year plus the 50 cents that the community voted for.
Just a, just a time for public comment.
Yeah. That's okay.
One of the things, I hope I don't get this wrong, one of the things that surprised me was the assessed value of our community relative to others in our area and in our conference. I think as a community member, I was either naive or just hadn't thought about it. And I think it's telling.
Yeah.
I think those are details that could, you know, would be useful.
Yeah.
In a presentation like this that see from the other community members, they're not here.
Yeah.
But, you know, I would assume that some of this is in the paper or some other form. I do think it'd be useful.
Yeah, and some of the communities won't set their tax rate until later in the month because they have the whole month of August to do it. They have to submit it by the 31st of August to the county, the county clerks. So it takes the month of August for all the 525 school districts in the state of Missouri to get their levy set. And then it'll be, then it goes out and it's public document out on the, on the state auditor's website. Am I saying that right, Courtney? They can go out and see the, the assessed valuation.
Yes.
On the state auditor's office website. Yeah, yeah, but yeah, I'll put, make notes. Like I said, in August, we really don't know those until everybody gets them set. But I can circle back around and kind of think, are you thinking areas like in our, our conference that we play athletic or?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
There are some that are very obvious. We need to go back and think about it.
Right, oh, yeah.
Once you say that, you get it.
Yeah.
But there are other, and again, I'm probably drawing on this, like, community like Russellville. And I don't, I don't have anything against Russellville, I have good friends in Russellville, but I don't think it's intended in the same league as Russellville. And I think their valuations higher than ours.
I don't know that, yeah.
It's been a long time since I looked at this, there's other communities out there that fit my description there. It was not real, you know, as a community member that would have to be attention to that. You know, I, I was really surprised and I do think it would be useful. Not that the board's going out for any more increases.
Right.
By the way.
Right.
If you were, I guess, you'd be informed.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, I, once the assessed valuations all get set up, I can go out and look for that information. Maybe later this fall, get it, get it out there. Yeah, that's no problem.
I think Cole County's tax rate is considerably higher than what Montau or Cooper.
Right, well, it's, it's, it's a lot of details, right?
Yeah.
Assess valuation.
A lot of main parts, yeah.
It's, you know, population, I, you guys. I understand it's all those factors.
Yeah.
And I think the community needs to know that.
Yeah.
Or at least having access easier.
Sure.
We can find it, but I still don't think you guys have.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I can do that. I can look at the athletic conference. And then I may also pull in a few schools that may not be in our conference, just so you kind of have a guide. But yeah, I'll put that together. Just give me a little time. I gotta wait till everybody's done. So any other questions? Great suggestion. All right. Well, we got about nine or 10 minutes and we'll call the regular meeting to order. Thanks, Courtney.
Start with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, very good. All right, so I think we'll just seek a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Craig. Second by Amanda. All in favor? Seven, zero. All right, so we have the consent agenda there. I know you were talking about having to abstain.
I need to abstain from Debbie Tuttle on the sub list.
Okay. Is there anything else in there we need to pull out?
Oh, yeah.
Do you know what lines those are?
Yeah, I have check numbers.
Okay.
51106, 51150, 51212. 51181.
Kelly, did you have some too, I heard?
What'd you say?
51181.
It's only one? There should be two.
I have, that's the only one I've seen before.
Okay, I need to abstain from checking number 51181. Sorry about that.
I've got a dumb question.
No dumb questions.
Top checks. Is there anything we can do to resolve those that have been hanging in our register for years?
Well, I could sure write to them and, and put a letter together.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
You know, at this state of things, I don't know if there's much to do, but I did. Some of those are hanging.
Yeah.
Sameies from 2021.
Let me see what I can do.
I was just curious.
Does anyone have the bank with all of them?
Well, that was my question.
Like checks that are still four years old.
And some of these are just.
Yeah.
Some of these are just a year, but.
But your bank has to catch it too.
I think Sammy's account's already been.
The tree, that's, oh, contacted me this summer about that, the memorial. That's in the my board packet. They have the picture and like the, all the landscaping, all of that. It's been taken care of. It was a little bit over the $465 that was made in donations in his name. And so PTO paid for the extra part of that and it's all taken care of. And there's a plaque out there that says, "In memory of Sammy Shrek in the States."
There was a check to the state of $2,080.
I think it's leftover from paid time off that no one can claim because there's no one taking this estate money. They weren't interested.
Right.
Just that's until, like, it's not really a mistake.
That may be five years, but I may be wrong about that. I was just curious.
Sorry, I don't read out two separate things.
No, I, I've just, I've seen these for over a year now.
Let me work on that. See what I can do.
All right, anything else we need to pull out? If not, we'll just seek a, a motion for the approval of consent agenda.
So moved.
David. Second. Second by Kelly. All right, all in favor? Seven, oh. Okay, that moves us into presentations. We have the CTA here.
I don't need to go too far. There's only three of us that showed up. So I do want to thank those who did show up and I thank two of the new. One just changed position. I mean, her teacher just changed position from para to sped teacher. We have Sarah Hansen, our sped director, and these were not last, Dr. Juszczyk. So we welcome them.
All right, very good. So that'll get us into reports. So we'll start with Dr. Dill.
So we had our back to school breakfast today at Full House over there. Some of you were able to. It was a great breakfast put on by Otha. They did a great job catering. They almost had to wear sunglasses though because the kitchen is so shiny. They were super excited. It was fun to be with them this morning as they were preparing breakfast. Bus routes are, they're running bus routes tomorrow to get some times and timed at the different homes throughout the counties, but also like the designated spots. So they'll be able to talk to kiddos. Once we finalize the, we, well, we aren't going to finalize enrollment tomorrow. Back to school bash will give us a better picture of who's really coming back and what's going on there. Mint and Mr. Sonamaker, he's still at it. I mean, that guy is, he's like all over it. I'm like, listen, listen, it's okay, it's okay. And he's like, I just know there's more things to do. And I'm like, it's okay, you know, but Mint and Mr. Sonamaker and those kids, they are just hammering it on. And so we just got a lot, we're just got a lot of work going on. We got teachers back today and para scheme and classrooms are getting put together. And Colt, our tech director, he's putting, busy putting things together. Smart boards, we had one delivered today. I led a caravan of a big semi over to the high school. So it's hustling and bustling around here right now. So that's exciting.
Sounds like the kids did a good job this summer.
Oh, they did a great job. And so they keep, they kept saying, we want a picture. And still, can we just get a picture of us and put it up by the gym where like the sports pictures are? And we'll be the maintenance group 2025. I said, we'll get that picture. And so we got them all, T-shirts and shirts that are alike. And we just want to wait for all of them that think we can gather them together. Now they want to do, I, I asked them to please do a serious picture, but they have a funny picture in mind too. So hang on, but anyway, we're going to get some pictures taken of those guys because they did a really great job. Maddie Carver Hall did a great job on, she did the kitchen floor herself. And I mean, it was like glass. At first I thought, oh, that's wet. And I bent down last Monday, I'm like, that's great. And it's just, it's beautiful. So they, they've done a wonderful job. Mr. Sonamaker has taken hold of that and destroyed them.
Very good.
Phenomenal. They're proud of their work. That's an important part.
Very good.
Yeah.
Questions for Dr. Dill? All right, that will get us into the school board.
We are ready to start school. Tomorrow we have the back to school bash in Kansas City. Today was a pretty full day for teachers. We had our welcome breakfast. We had several hours of meetings, back to school stuff. Going through a lot of new stuff this year. Last year I felt like it was pretty much business as normal this year with cell phone law. Changes that come with that, you know, there's a lot of stuff to go over there. Just making sure the teachers, okay.
Yeah.
Kind of referencing other schools that have had no cell phone ban in place for a couple of years. Talking to some of those principals. Kids adjust to whatever the rules are. So I'm just making sure that they understand that. Okay, I know it was great. Got some stuff out hallway right now, but we'll all clean up tomorrow at two o'clock. Two o'clock tomorrow. We're ready to build next week. It's on Tuesday.
Crazy how fast the summer went. Crazy, crazy.
I did have one question real quick. I did talk to another school board member just because the new cell phone law isn't new to a lot of us. Is there any worry with students with dual credits being able to access, you know, their paperwork from school and home to handle those dual credits?
They'll be able to sign on. It's really just the library and for your class. We have to sign on using the phone. Teachers understand it because we all use the same duo login for our computers. So everybody kind of knows it doesn't take very long. That's two factors. So it comes out after a packet.
Well, just kind of talked to a couple of them. They, some of them made suggestions for, you know, dual credits to have their own laptop to work on that directly because they didn't find a solution. So I didn't know if that was a solution we need to worry about or if, you know, we kind of looked into that.
We have textbooks that we can clap this year. So they won't use some of the textbooks in there. That's what I've read there. Our whole group, you know, like, so we kind of, we've kind of thought that through, making sure the resources that needs to be.
I just, it was something I've been discussing, you know, talking to other board members.
We talked about it at the end of the year.
They're urging the law that allows for 500 teachers to get permission to get out for educational purposes.
They give us some discretion on that.
Okay, well, that, I just, like I said, just something I'd heard and just want to make sure.
Very good. Who else? Okay.
I'm just going to echo a lot of what Mr. Cole said. The teacher for back goes an exciting day. We were very busy. We have a couple more days of busy before the kiddos get here. I talked about the Sammy Shrek report and I've got some pictures in the board report for that. So you guys can see it if you haven't been inside the building. A list of professional development we did over the summer and then just an overview of the whole school year kind of planned out about where we're heading. We've got some good plans as far as working on math curriculum this year. So that will be our big focus. If you'll notice, our attendance number is kind of projected. We have more than 15 when I made this board report signed up. So we are plus 15 from the beginning of last year. So definitely bigger classes and the carton is massive.
We had that money for Sammy's memorial. I guess we started talking about maybe in May, May-ish. So that turned out to be a really nice project. I thought that was really, really nice. Good job with that, sure. All right, Ms. Hansen?
Hey, first one, hey. Guys, again, for the wonderful, excited, like they all said, it's the first day back to teachers. But I have worked for these with them as professionals, so I have worked. Questions, training. A lot of para professional and special education teachers went to training this year. We've got 12 in already. And we've got some camp training with our local RBC center. And then even a pair of professionals went to para camp in Vidalia. So they're learning a lot. I think that's kind of new for them to be like included. The para 12, like in this part of the team, they came to be all staff spec leading that we had today. What I've heard, echo you, is just more training. More about our spec track system. That's what we did for you all last year. I look forward to engaging and educating one of the people I've had for all of our decades. So most, like 90% of schools are very dualized. So transferring out across our special education population will be much easier. And all that will be supported and. So the deeper part is that it's going to help you.
Okay, great.
One thing is I'm not sure what it would like to be on the board report in regards to like special education numbers. Ideally, I would share month by month, like how many are in this evaluation process, how many are currently. I don't have a number. I hope the amount of students who are in will be not transferring out. So I'll have a better number by September.
Okay.
Once that kind of slows down. I will say before school started, we were at 124 special education students in the 504s. That does put us at a 22% ratio for our district population compared to the state average. So ideally, we would want to figure out how we can decrease that. The state average target is 13. We're kind of over that. It can be if it's justified. I just want to make sure our graphics are appropriate. In regards to like foster and homeless, the learning process, still coming up with what needs to be done in federal programming. Why is that? Heather's helped and stuff we don't talk about. I'm learning all of those things to think about as well. And then one component is our safety from making mistakes. People came through the debt fee that we can use requirements and services under IDA. Basically, we're doing a 4.0 rating that we are doing all the things correctly legally. I am, we are in cohort three, so we are under just a health assessment. Next year we'll actually have to transfile them. And I think that was really it. We did have to add Ms. Harvick in. She lost her career last month. And she is definitely set up and played and taken down on and she's going to be the wall in addition.
That's awesome.
Thanks for feedback for your report. Generally speaking, if you're highlighting the laws or then you have to follow. If you're more in it than we are, and then anything that's following that. You can always see if you're obtaining what's going to be. Or if there's like a shortfall, then we can elaborate and see how we can help.
Who else?
I would just like to, um, Ms. Hansen, congratulations on your doctor.
Yeah. Made it to today.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It was a very long process.
I think I, there aren't any other questions from the hands. I accidentally skipped over Mr. Harvick. I apologize. He has volleyball and football starting.
Everything, RC Sports will start everything across. But it's all made, you have to notice. Traps, they're repaired, best they can. About bias another year or two. All uniforms are in. It's always a ready, you know, you can hire, start the first day. I'm just in the process of getting all the jerseys certified, finishing their days.
The football uniforms ended up making in the extra ones?
Everything came in. We actually saved a little money here.
Yeah.
Might change. Wrestling.
Good.
Thanks. Thanks for what we must figure out.
Yeah.
Okay, I do have a question. Do, do tracks physicals to know when kids have to have their physical? You do? So do you, you give that to the coaches and then the coaches say, hey?
That's something I bring up, like, they'll say this, your first two weeks is on. Inter-physical, right now I'm, I'm off football, I don't cheer. Which is way ahead of the game usually. Plug in, type in Misha. The one where they call in is really rostered. And often that tells you who's up to date, who's expired, who's going to expire. That part's actually. That's why they just added a few years ago.
That's good.
Which helps out a lot because normally you're just, you had a third ring behind you and you didn't go through it. Was fine whenever everybody had one. It was like, okay, take it out, new ones next year, easy. But with the two year, it was tough for that two year. Now that they have it online.
So any kids out there, I mean, kids have been notified that they need to get a physical, that's.
Well, they've all been told to get one. Every, every coach, we put that out there. I've got probably 50 of them in different spots throughout the hallways for the kids to get it. Then when they show up, obviously the coach reminds me I had that. But it'll tell you what area you have left, who's left, when to expire. I make copies. I have a folder in my office. I give a folder to the coach, so. I might coach him for example. Yeah, it's the names of the kids that are coming out. Sees them every day. So you remind them every day. As all the kids. Have their, that person's that we.
Just didn't want a kid to be shocked with a blanket statement. You didn't make sure your physical's up to date. Kids don't. They don't put gas in their cars.
At the reading last year, we had school year, they sent home some, hey, get your physical.
I just didn't know like our, not the guidance, but our, our new program, I don't know if it can help us with that. You know, the. Yeah, teacher, not students, not that. I don't know if it can. I'm not asking you to do anything that's. But we get a lot of good notifications from that. It'd be nice, but.
I mean, it should be told to the kid. Everybody knows they're supposed to get one. Information doesn't usually make it home, but like Heather Moon will send out multiple reminders throughout the year. Last of the.
Yeah.
The free.
Want to talk down to Kelly?
Of course, you don't have to get one every, every two years. I looked up the other day and they'll be bringing this to you. There's not any shirts now. Providing now that it's not the other three months. So it's all free recommend that you get one year because there's no doubt that a kid shouldn't get it.
Well, you got to think about heat exhaustion, those types of things. Those athletes in the fall are different than your winter.
Body changes so much.
Correct.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, that moves us into old business. So we have some approvals of policies that we had a first look at last month. So I just kind of seek a motion for, for approval of those. Unless someone had any, any doctor.
We need to list them all off?
I think so.
Each one?
Yeah. You did one motion. Yeah, we'll do that.
The motion we approved the updated policies as presented.
All right, motion by Kelly. We have a second?
Sorry.
Second by Craig. All in favor? Seven, oh.
And please know there'll be more coming. They're just trying to figure out what these new laws, how to shake them out and get them out to school district.
This is really exciting reading.
It is. It's riveting.
Enjoy it a lot.
Yeah. We are. Yep.
We get that will pull us into new business.
Yeah. So based on the district's Missouri State Auditor Form C, which is part of the package that we calculate our tax levy on every year. For that Form C, which is debt service, so that's like your bond issues that you guys have passed in the, in the past and, and built things with. When we take that into account with the fiscal year 2526 assessed valuation, then the existing debt payments, you can only have two years of debt payments within that, that fund. And the current funds within the debt service, the district has, will be approving 1.6, I'm asking for the district to approve a 1.6 million defeasance and prepayment to save the district over $311,000 in interest expense. That's a pretty big chunk of money there. This action will reduce the excess funds within the debt service fund account that have accumulated over the past few years under the guidance of our previous financial advisor. The district's now working with LJ Hart and they have recommended this defeasance to the, at no cost to the district.
Very good. I would just seek a motion. Here it is. And we'll do this by roll call.
So moved.
Yeah, we'll read it.
Read all of it? Ah, gee.
You want me to read it?
Yeah, you go ahead and read it.
All right, I'll make a motion to make a resolution authorizing the establishment of an escrow account with UMB Bank, Kansas City, Missouri, to fees and prepay
1.6.
Paying in principal amount of general obligation refunding and improvement bonds, series two, 2021, and authorizing the district to enter into an escrow agreement.
All right, good job, Kelly. Do we have a second for this? A second in by Derek. We're going to do this by roll call. Amanda?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes. Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes, sir.
Grant?
And I'm a yes, so it's seven, oh. Okay, so the, the next piece of business is to set the tax rate, which we had a hearing on earlier this morning. We've already talked about the amounts. This reflects that 50% increase that we've talked about. That's going to be dedicated to support the teacher salary schedule. That new proposed tax rate. That new proposed tax rate is, uh, $4, well, 4.5505.
Sorry about the four digits. It's just a.
It's easier for me to say that.
Thank you.
So, um, I, I would just seek a motion, um, for, to set this tax rate.
He could, yeah.
And there is something to read.
Make your motion first.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve a total tax levy at 2.9671 placed in the operating levy, levy. Uh, 0.5000 placed in the teacher fund and 1.0834 placed in debt service for the 2025, 25, 26 school year. Damn, I ain't talked that much in a while.
No, David.
All we can.
All right. So we have a, a second by Kelly. Uh, Amanda? Craig?
Yes. Yes.
Kelly?
Yes, sir.
Grant?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that is seven, oh. Um, that gets us to the end of regular session.
I make a motion to move us in the executive session following 610.021, 313.
Second by Derek, or motion by Derek, second by David. Amanda?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
David? Kelly?
Sir.
Grant? And I'm a yes, so seven, oh. Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you all.